All right. Good morning, Madam Clerk. Are we on the record?
Madam Mayor, if you're ready, we can get everything up and running.
Okay. At this time, thank you, everyone, for joining us. I immediately walked in and saw our furry friends, and it made my day. You can't get any better than this. Okay, so we have a long agenda, so I want to just get to it. We are going to start with the pledge allegiance. I would love for Chief Nance to lead us in the pledge. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it right back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're going to take roll call for Wednesday, February 14th. Councilmember Breckus, Dour, Martinez, Ebert. Absent at this time, Taylor, Reese, Shivi. Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open up item A3, general public comment. Madam Mayor, members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, HTTPS, colon, forward slash, forward slash, L-I-N-K-S, period, R-E-N-O, period, G-O-V, forward slash, capital C-O-U-N-C-I-L, zero, two, hyphen, one, four. It should be noted for those in attendance that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with Council rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disruptive behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. And Madam Mayor, before we call our first public commenter, we would like to move into proclamations.
Chief Nance, come on up. This is a very special proclamation, so I would love for you to do the honors of introducing this special day.
Chief Nance, Reno Police Department, and I'd like to introduce our Victim Services Unit. If they can come up and join me, so I'm not the only one up here, because this is about them. You guys can join, too, if you want. Christina? I don't, I have to call them out and get them all up here, so we're up in this room. So the Victim Services of the Reno Police Department, it's our 25th anniversary. So we had cake and celebrated last week, and this is another way to recognize them. We're really proud of the work that they do, over 20,000 contacts a year, so different incidents that they're out in, and more than 3,000 victims a year that they're helping to provide assistance to after traumatic incidents. So with that being said, thank you all for your hard work and dedication, both to the Reno Police Department and to the city. And I will read this proclamation that is a lot of words. And I'm glad I brought my glasses, so you guys can't make fun of me. Thank you, I appreciate you all. Oh, great. The Office of the Mayor of City of Reno, Nevada proclamation, whereas the mission of the Victim Services Unit of the Reno Police Department, VSU, is to proudly serve victims of crime, treating them with respect and dignity while responding to their needs and concerns; and whereas VSU educates victims on their rights and is committed to providing the most professional, empowering advocacy possible while assessing each case on an individual basis; and whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the rights to be heard and to be treated fairly, with dignity, respect, and working to meet their needs, rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice system and social service systems; and whereas identifying, researching, and serving all victims of crimes, especially those from groups that have often less than access to healing services and avenues of justice, is essential; and whereas the Reno Police Department Victim Services is honored to celebrate 25 years of supporting victims and survivors in the aftermath of crime, building trust among victims and their families, collaborating with other service providers, and engaging our community in response efforts. I now therefore, now therefore, I, Hillary Shivi, Mayor of the City of Reno, do hereby declare, I'm Catherine Nance for Hillary Shivi, Mayor of Reno, Victim Services United Day on February 14th, 2024. Thank you very much.
We thought it was very appropriate, because it's Valentine's Day, and just so you guys know, you really are sort of the heart and soul of the police department. And also, you do the work behind the scenes. No one gets to see what you do every single day and how you really impact lives of people that are in some of the most horrific situations. I just, I can't thank you enough. You have to have a lot of compassion, a lot of love for people to do the jobs you do. I would just like one of you, I know, you know, public speaking is never an easy thing. Matter of fact, they say it's like top three most feared things to do, which is flying the dentist and public speaking. But I would love for one of you just kind of give us a little idea of what you're, what you do exactly, so the public can understand how critical your role is. Is there one of you that would come? All right, well, she, perfect. Everyone's like, whew, thank God she did that. Come on up.
So what we do is we really work with victims and meet them where they are. We really empower them and provide the resources in the community to help them get connected, to be able to heal from the trauma that occurs within our community. We really focus on empowerment is the biggest thing for us. We really want to help guide them with the choices that they want to make. We don't tell people what to do. We don't tell them, this is how you keep yourself safe. We really focus on how do we help people get access to the resources that are in our community, and how do we help people heal, so we don't have as much trauma in our community?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm Bree Burches.
Yes, Bree. I was going to say, I bet you're Bree, right?
Yes, I am.
But you literally hold people's hands in some of the worst moments.
Yes. We provide a lot of guidance. I always want to empower the victim to recognize that they're doing all the work. We're just there to hold their hand and provide the tools and resources, but they're the one doing all the work. They're the ones that are on their own healing journey. We're just there to support them.
You know, but that's such a, it's such a big deal. You hold their hand, you cry with them, you laugh with them. You know, it's a, it's a very big responsibility, and thank you. And so 25 years ago, someone had some very smart insight to start this, and we're really grateful. We're very, very grateful for all of you guys. Look at, they're all beautiful, too. All right, well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Madam Clerk, I'm going to hand it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our first, our first public commenter today is Joan Bowman, followed by Terry Brooks.
Mayor Shivi, council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Joan Bowman. I am the president of Pause for Love Reno. We are Reno's oldest and largest therapy dog organization. We wish to express our deep gratitude and delight in Councilwoman Reese's proposal to use his discretionary funds to support our organization. His support will directly benefit our Pause to Read program. Pause to Read serves eight libraries in the Washoe County with a monthly visit with therapy dogs. Children can develop their literacy skills by reading to our dogs, and then they get to choose a book from our collection to keep as their own. And I'm sorry, I was so nervous.
Doing great.
And build a library. Thank you.
I guess my comment about public speaking, flying the dentist, really got you. I'm sorry. No, we're all in this together. You did great. You did fantastic.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please, go ahead, Councilwoman Reese.
I just want to trust my thanks to all of you for the program. It's how we taught our own children to read. You know, we took them to the public library, they sat and read to a dog, and it was a pretty special program, especially for our son, who was a little late in reading. Sometimes boys are like that. And for him, it was the opportunity to connect with a furry friend that made all the difference in his reading journey. So thank you for that.
Not to mention, I don't know if anyone else is getting up to speak from your group? No? I just want to commend you guys. I see you at the airport, I see you at the hospitals, and you were there in one of the most difficult and tragic times in my life. And Cody makes a great mayor, much better than me. So just thank you so much. Who is this little cutie over here?
Her name is Daya.
Is that a sheepdog?
She's a Bernidoodle, Bernidoodle, cat dog who'll laugh.
Oh, my God. They're all just adorable. Just adorable. Please, come anytime. Who is that?
TJ.
TJ. Look how good. He's being so good. Well, thank you so much. Unfortunately, by the end of the meeting, they would all be asleep and very bored. But I just can't thank you enough for all the work you guys do in our community as well. And also, I know that some of you have worked with our Victims Unit to some of those really tragic situations, so thank you. I always love seeing you guys. Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, back at you.
Thank you. Terry Brooks, followed by Bill Miller.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today I have on my mind thoughts of discrimination against people who are blind. Many people who are blind often have a fear of falling into pitfalls that they have heard are near. If they fall in one because they are blind, then they really have a fear of being left behind. But just like other people who have lost one of their senses, the blind have learned to make good use of their other senses. Even though they're blind and they don't have vision, they can use their sense of touch with accurate precision. They can use their fingers to read things written in Braille, and they learn to do so with extraordinary detail. They have learned to use their really good sense of touch because they can't see, they depend on it so much. When they hear someone's voice but can't see them with their eyes, because they're depending on their ears, who they hear, they recognize. When they hear anything only with their ears, they can visualize what they hear as if it appears. They really know what food is good with their senses of smell and taste. They don't have to see good food, and it won't go to waste. So there are certain occupations that they could probably do a whole lot better than anyone else could do. They may need some help finding their way to work, but when they do, then they do some extraordinary work. So anyone who discriminates against those who are blind and cannot see just might need to close their own eyes and open their mind to see. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to seeing you all when I have a lot more to say. And by the way, I've noticed that some of your more recent cards have your names and positions written in Braille, and I appreciate that. And Cody gave me a Cody card.
Oh, you got a Cody card.
And it's not written in Braille, but with that smile, it doesn't need to be in Braille. That smile, you can hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, this is chapter 24, and just so you know, I've only got 22 more chapters to go. Thank you.
Bill Miller, followed by Jerry Mifsud.
Good morning, Mayor Shivi, Vice Mayor Dour, City Council staff, fellow citizens. I'm Bill Miller, instigator of the Climatiers Network, here with a Valentine's Day poem for you, our elected representatives. How does climatiers love the O Council? Let me count the ways. For implementing overall reductions in community-wide emissions. For implementing our federal platform, encouraging ongoing funding and solutions for more resilient communities. For creating the Solar Plus Storage Project at the Public Safety Center. For approving the Community Solar Project at the lot behind Station 3. For achieving our recent LEED Gold Certification. For moving on the One Water Nevada Water Purification Project. For obtaining the grant with Rebuilding Together Northern Nevada for heat pumps. For continuing to add EVs to our fleet of vehicles. For approval of downtown micro-mobility network of streets. Approval of solar arrays for the Moana Springs Community Aquatics and Fitness Center. Approval of lease agreement with Avalon that will provide a geothermal heat for the MSC and FC. For acceptance of the USDA grant for Urban Community of Forestry City of Reno Program to grow and plant more trees along Airway Drive. For all this, and for all you do to protect the environment and address the climate crisis, you have earned our undying love. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, is there supposed to be some engagement with the dog?
Is this your dog?
Well, as the instigator, I guess I have to take responsibility for it, but until this morning, I have nothing against it.
Oh. Isn't that adorable? Oh, isn't that so cute? Where'd you get him? That is adorable. I love it. He's super soft. Then he should howl. He should howl. Ooh. Great job. I love it. Thank you so much. That was so incredibly kind, but I have to tell you, it's really the hard work of our team here at the City of Reno that helps us get there, but also, they're very passionate about it, too. And we really need your activism now more than ever. It's pretty critical. We can all see the changes that are happening throughout our country, out the world. And so, thank you. Please, please, keep doing what you're doing. Get more people to get involved. We need you as much as possible. So thank you for making my day adorable.
Jerry Mifsud, followed by Robin Palmer.
Good morning, Jerry.
I told people you were going to say that. You've not made this easy for me at all. My name is Jerry Mifsud. None of you are returning my phone calls.
Mr. Mifsud, if you can step up to the microphone, so that we can capture you.
Anytime you interrupt me, I want those seconds back. I could be heard from back there. Anyway, you're not returning my phone calls because of the issue at hand, which is May 18th, 2022. You told me I wasn't dressed properly illegally, told me, because there was no dress code, okay? What followed was an argument, and Thornley over here decided to throw me out when you were the genesis of the argument. That was May 18th, 2022. Two days later, Bob Conrad of This Is Reno, an online art, articles, he wrote an account of what took place and quoted Jenny as saying, "You were wrong. Your attorney threw you under the bus," that's Carl Hall, "by saying, 'You regret saying what you said.'" These are wrongdoing, mind you. Thornley even said that he was going to make up something about dress code, meaning there was no dress code. And the mayor, when I met with her privately for an hour, told me that never would have happened on that day if she was here. How many people do you need to hear to say you were wrong? So in the ensuing year, I tried to settle with you people, except you set a trap for me in meeting with the mayor and Carl, to try to see if I was going to blackmail you one month before the election. Instead, you offered me help with being a housing authority, because I was looking for help, and also with, let's do that party again, the party that I threw in the park. That, in all appearances, appeared to be a bribe. You know, I'm astounded at how cool you could still look under fire. But you people are pretty bad, twice. A couple of days after all this took place, someone authorized the security guards out here to go to the clerk's office and tell the clerk office to call me up and tell me that I was banned, that I was banned. And there was no banning. It was just made to try to intimidate me. A second time. The first time, after I was trying to get Donna. Donna Clump, this is all moving on. You need to have the state come in and look at your hiring practices. I have nothing against gay people, but you have more gay people here in City Hall because you're recruiting out of our center. That is wrong. There are qualified people. Their sexual orientation shouldn't qualify them. I think Devin has something to do with that. Outside of that, Happy Valentine's Day.
All right, thank you so much, Jerry.
Robin Palmer, followed by Maurice Page.
Hi, Robin. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Shivi, and council members, and city staff. My name is Robin Palmer. I'm a climate advocate. I'm concerned about our global climate crisis and whether we, all of us, leave a livable planet for future generations. Happy Valentine's Day. I heart the City of Reno for having wisdom and progressive foresight to hire a sustainability manager, Suzanne Groneman. I don't know whether she's here this morning.
No, but she's probably watching.
Okay, good. And I heart the City of Reno City Council for supporting the projects that Suzanne has brought forward for consideration. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, City of Reno. Thank you, Suzanne Groneman. I would like this entered in the record.
Thank you so much.
Maurice Page.
Good morning, Mayor Shivi, City Council members. Happy Valentine's Day. My name is Maurice Page, and I am the new executive director.
Hi, Maurice.
How's it going? And I am the new executive director for the Nevada Housing Coalition.
That's awesome.
Yes, so I, so NHC has been tirelessly championing the cause of affordable housing here in Nevada, and the coalition's dedication and commitment have not only improved the lives of many countless and countless Nevadans, but we have also paved the way for transformative legislation actions that address critical issues on housing insecurity in our state. One of the coalition's major successes is playing the instrumental role of shaping the 500 million Home Means Nevada Affordable Housing Initiative and the passage of the Nevada Supportive Housing Development Fund, also known as AB 310, which stands as a testament to the coalition's impactful advocacy efforts. Without having to take too much of your time, I would like to just say I look forward to coming back and presenting on all of the coalition's efforts to provide affordable housing, or attainable housing, or workforce housing. I know we have multiple terms for it, and so, but we definitely look forward to presenting at a later date and time on what we look forward to doing here in the future and how we can become a more, or strengthening our partnership with the City of Reno and throughout the state of Nevada. Thank you very much.
All right, well, we look forward to that. Are you new to the area, or no?
I'm actually based in Southern Nevada. But I will be up here, yeah.
Not supposed to say that here.
But I will be up here every other month, visiting and meeting and talking to folks. So I'm definitely looking forward to, again, strengthening our partnerships and presenting on what we, what we're doing going forward.
Well, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Take care.
All right, Madam Mayor, that is the close of our, our opening public comment. For the record, we did receive 15 comments, which were general in nature or not directly associated with an agenda item prior to 4:00 PM. These comments were voicemail and/or written correspondence received via our reno.gov online public comment form or by email to our office. Copies of these have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available to the public on reno.gov. There were two letters in favor, one letter in opposition, and 12 letters of concern. With that, we're closing out general public comment, and we're moving on to item A4, approval of the agenda.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to ask council members, may I get a motion? I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Moving on to item A5, approval or acceptance of the minutes for January 17th and January 24th.
All right.
Approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving into B, our consent items, and we do have several public commenters on this as well.
All right, thanks so much. Let's go into public comment.
Thank you. We have Marie Rodriguez, followed by William Poochart.
Marie, hi.
Marie Rodriguez, for the record, and I'll be actually pretty brief this time. I just wanted to personally say something in favor of John Fleming on item B16 for the Adi Silverata Art Project that the Reno Arts and Culture Commission approved him as our artist. Even though I am on that board, disclosure, we had between 60 and 70 applicants for that project, and we narrowed it down to three. And when it came down to the last three, we all were in favor of John Fleming's project. I feel that what he is proposing not only is a representation of his own art, but he's offering future opportunities to present, present other artists on the school, structure that he has proposed for that area. So other artists can also benefit from him being given the opportunity to put that project in place. And I'm hoping to address this with our board to not just represent known artists of our area, but everything from maybe schoolchildren art to other types of art such as photography, and even maybe the performing arts by maybe displaying some of our local other artists that don't actually paint or take photos and stuff like that. So I feel like this project is something that will encompass the entire art community, and I just, I'm very proud of the decision that we made, and I'm looking forward to seeing his art presented there. Thank you.
All right. Are you enjoying the board?
Oh, yeah.
You are? It's a tou, it's a tough decision to make, because art's so subjective.
It is.
So I don't envy you, because I know that sort of feeling. It's, and they're all very, very talented in different ways.
It is. It is difficult decisions, and try not to be subjective myself. Because it is, art, music, dance, we all have different tastes, and just trying to find something that you feel like will represent the entire city or the majority of the city would, would agree with, it is.
Well, I think you did a great job. Great selection.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marie.
Marie, you're also a literary artist. You're a published author.
Yes, and that's something else I would like to see perhaps displayed there, is maybe book covers of some of our local authors. We have a huge literary community here, and Sierra Arts has actually been really good in helping to put together a literary community, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Great.
William Poochart, followed by Gary Cecil.
Happy Valentine's Day, Mayor Shivi, and members of the Reno City Council. While today commemorates St. Valentine, I stand here representing an organization that celebrates the patron saint of Ireland, St. Patrick. My name is Willie Pootred, and I am the president of the Sons and Daughters of Aaron. We have been around for over half a century, founded by some familiar politicians and businesses with familiar names like the Heelys, the McDonalds, the O'Maras, the Conleys, the Lawlers, and the Sollivans, many of them that are in the picture that you see here from 1969. I am here to say, goa re ma agan, thank you in Gaelic, to both Mayor Shivi and Councilwoman Ebert, and all of you for item B27 on your agenda, which allocates $1,500 to our organization. These funds will be used to support our local Northern Nevada Celtic Kali on May 18th and continues the legacy of the Celtic celebration. Not only does my organization support Celtic musicians such as the local Sierra Highlanders Pipe Band, originally the Reno Police Pipe Band, who will be Pipe Band, originally the Reno Police Pipe Band, who will be performing at our event, but we have also participated in public works projects such as assisting with the restoration of 30 Irish family graves at one of the oldest burial grounds in Reno, Hillside Cemetery, near UNR, whose graves bear the names of familiar Reno street names, Plum, Mayberry, and Peckham. We also participate in community events and are proud to have won Best Community Group in recent years in both the Nevada Day Parade and the Sparks Christmas Parade. I am very proud of the cultural bridge we forged with Latino Arts last fall when we celebrated the Celtic holiday of Samhain at their Day of the Dead Festival, and hope to build upon that connection this year. I'd like to invite all of you to our 53rd Annual St. Patrick's Day Dinner and Show at Circus Circus on March 9th, which will include bagpipes, Irish dancing, and whiskey tasting. We will be commemorating the 100th anniversary of a memorial ceremony of laying shamrocks from Ireland at the grave of Irish aviator William Blanchfield, which we will hold a ceremony the following day, March 10th, at Mountain View Cemetery. For more information, go to IrishNevada.org. In closing, I'd like to recognize council members Ebert and Reese, who I am proud to call fellow members of the Sons and Daughters of Aaron, and to thank them for their support and contributions to our community and our organization. And also to recognize the efforts of fellow member Sparks Councilman Donald Abbott and his friends, who are delivering a record number of 5,700 handmade Valentines made by elementary school children into the hands of seniors today, many of them who are lonely and have no families.
Oh, Willie, that's so great. I didn't know Donald was doing that. That's awesome.
And begging your indulgence, the group here, pause of love. I'm proud that our treasurer, Paul Beaton, brought his dalmatian to comfort, he lives down in Southern Nevada, to comfort the victims, the survivors of the UNLV shooting.
Oh, that was very sweet.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, Willie, and also all the work that you're doing. It's really incredible because you're keeping all the traditions alive and everyone excited. My grandfather's name was O'Grady, so you can tell, very Irish.
Oh, me, your sister.
Yes.
Yes. So I hope to see all of you at our dinner, and an early St. Patrick, or happy St. Patrick's Day to all of you.
Thank you.
Very, very much.
All right, thanks.
Gary Cecil, followed by Ann Elizabeth Northen.
Gary, hello. Good morning. City Council members, Mr. City Manager. I'm here today to, on behalf of the Ward Five NAB, I'm here to ask for your approval of a $5,000 donation to Join Together Northern Nevada. That's Consent Agenda Item B28. When the NAB members asked for help to make our work more impactful, Councilmember Taylor listened carefully and laid down a challenge for us, that we go through a thorough process to identify some of our Ward Five neighbors' concerns, present and discuss our findings amongst ourselves, decide on one concern we can all agree on, which is deserving of support, find a local agency that addresses this concern, find a program within this agency that could benefit from up to a $5,000 donation addressing one facet of this concern, and then present our recommendation to Councilmember Taylor. Apart from our individual research, we had to do all of this within the allowable parameters of the Nevada Open Meetings Law, and that wasn't easy. So I know what you go through. Councilmember Taylor, Catherine, thank you very much for challenging us. I really appreciate it. We enjoyed it and learned a lot, but thank you for doing that. We hope you like our choice. In terms of outcome, my colleagues and I went back to our communities, which was important. We asked questions, we started conversations, and finally, we honed in on one general broad area, help the less fortunate. Community liaisons Jenna Moyer and Abigail Mayorga were fantastic, very helpful in us narrowing down our focus even further to the tough issue of drug and alcohol addiction. Eventually, our NAB became aware of a program that directly assists those in their addiction rehabilitation path. I'd summarize the ethos of this program as, for want of a ride, a recovering person dropped out of rehabilitation. Rehab is hard work. Wraparound services are essential to keep someone in rehab. Join Together Northern Nevada has an existing and successful program providing Uber rides for people in rehab from their homes to their recovery programs. Unfortunately, this grant support just expired. When you consider the strain on the individual, and the families, and on society as a whole, our NAB concluded that this was a very worthwhile program to support. And I'm delighted today that the executive director of Join Together Northern Nevada, Ann Elizabeth Northen, is here, and she'll give you just a few more highlights.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. That's a Nevada accent, right?
Absolutely. I'm Irish.
I love it. Come on up.
Good morning. Thank you for the introduction. I am Ann Elizabeth Northen. I'm the executive director for Join Together Northern Nevada. Thank you to Ward Five Neighborhood Advisory Board for your thorough and thoughtful process, and to Councilwoman Taylor for your consideration of this funding and support of mental health prevention, treatment, and recovery in the community. Thank you, Council, for having me today. Join Together Northern Nevada is a nonprofit substance misuse prevention coalition, and we believe that systemic change brought on by collective impact initiatives and strong community partnerships can create a thriving Washoe County. I am honored to serve this community with programs that weave through the continuum of care, from K-12 education to professional trainings, from holding a parent's hand at some of the hardest moments of their lives, to being on a call discussing youth suicide and trying to find light in the darkness. We have the privilege of developing partnerships to limit youth access, Facilitate Overdose Awareness Day, the DEA Drug Takeback Days, the Washoe County Prevention Conference, and more. There are many ways to get involved in the work of substance misuse prevention, and I hope you will join us through coalition membership, committee work, advocacy, and outreach. True change can occur when we move upstream and change the environments in which our children grow to prepare, to better prepare them to be resilient, to give themselves to their communities, and to find purpose. An example of the power of partnership, the work of JTNN, and the reason we're here today, is the Uber Health Program. We initiated the program to bridge the transportation gap that exists for people moving toward treatment and recovery. When funding ended for the programming, we were providing approximately 150 rides per quarter. These rides are life-saving. Instead of having to navigate the sea of information and services and try to find a ride, sometimes at 6:00 a.m., to have treatment, people have a warm voice on the other end of the line, working to get a vehicle right to their doorstep. Through this program, we can work with people as individuals and serve their individual needs. JTNN, in many cases, becomes a lifeline. There were many participants that said the ride was a make or break moment, the reason I made it one more day, the reason I stayed sober this week. I think I might actually be able to do this. The Uber rides are more than rides. They represent hope. I hope that this, through this collaboration, you'll be able to see and experience the power of prevention work. Prevention weaves through and glues together the continuum of care. Prevention is mental health. Prevention is hope. Prevention shapes the world for our children and for their children. Thank you for offering your hand to those most vulnerable in our community.
Fantastic job. Absolutely incredible.
Thank you.
I didn't think of it that way, but I know it sounds small, but if, I mean, I would imagine that ride signifies, like you said, so much more than we could ever even think of. You know, because that's half the battle of just getting there. Definitely want to help you, so please reach out to my office. I think it's really incredible work that you're doing. It's fantastic. Good job.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Great job, Councilwoman Taylor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to say the NAB members worked really hard on this. I think it was almost a year. So I was completely, I stayed out of it, and I just gave them a task, and they worked together collaboratively and found a great organization that we're extremely happy to be supporting. And then I also just wanted to thank Abby and Jana and Tyler. You guys really set the stage for this. So thank you so much for being here, and thank you for the good work that you do.
Thank you.
And that's great, because I, I'm starting to lose my voice, because I've been Superbowl screaming. No. Niners.
I think Councilmember Taylor was also screaming at the Superbowl, but for a different reason.
You can't hear you. I can't hear you. I did not know this program existed. I think more people know, need to know that this existed, or that it exists. And to the Ward Five NAB, you guys, awesome, awesome work. You know, I don't have a NAB, but it made me just think, I'm going to start my own NAB. Can you head that up for me, Gary? Will you be the?
No, you can not.
I can't have, Gary. I'm stealing you. Anyway, it's phenomenal, but I want, I think more people need to know, because it's not that much money, and one person could make such a huge difference, even if it was just a small donation. And I don't think they realize that something so small can have such a massive, massive impact. I love it. It's really, really smart. And we should call up, is it Uber that you work with?
Yeah, we work with Uber, Uber Directly. They have an Uber Health Program that's HIPAA certified, and so the drivers on that protect people's information as well.
I did not know that. That's incredible. Okay. Well, shout out to Uber, too. All right. Thanks so much. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With that, we have no additional comments, and we have not received any correspondence. So we're moving into council members pulling items.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to head over to Councilwoman Ebert. Why don't you give me some items to pull off the agenda?
Sure. I'd like to pull B9, B10, B17, B19, and B27.
Oh, you're a little fast for me. Go ahead. Say it again. B9, B10, 17.
10, 17, 19, and 27.
Councilwoman Doer. Yeah, I'm glad, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to pull B16, so I'm glad Marie Rodriguez came today, because that was on my list to pull.
Are you pulling it, or no?
I'm pulling it.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Reese.
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
All right, Councilwoman Taylor.
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Martinez.
B18, please.
Which one? 18.
18.
Got to squeeze that in there between 17 and 19. Mayor, or Councilwoman Bruckus.
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. So with that being said, I'd like to ask the council to give me approval of the remaining, remaining items.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to head on over, I believe, to item B9. Correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk.
That is correct. Thank you.
I believe it's B9.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Manager. My name's Joe Coudrier. I'm with the Utility Services Department. I'm a senior engineer, and I'm here to give a presentation on items number B9 and B10. So with that, so these, this item, both these items align with the strategic plan in the item, in the areas of infrastructure, climate change, and environmental sustainability. I think the best way to approach these items, they're highly connected, would be to give a little background, and then kind of, I think after the background, explain a little more of the details of the items. So both of these items pertain to a floodplain revision that was initiated by FEMA in approaching the city. So as you know, the city manages floodplains within our corporate limits, and we rely quite heavily on the FEMA maps or the floodplain maps that you've all heard about. To the extent that these maps are accurate, it helps our program. It's a regulatory program that we manage. Many of the map, many of the maps in this area are outdated. This is, and as a city, we'd like to have the most accurate maps possible. It both helps with orderly development, it helps to communicate risk to homeowners and business owners, and also in the circumstances where an owner or a developer wants to make modifications to an area and affecting a floodplain map, it's easy to do when the map is accurate. When it's not accurate, it creates issues. So FEMA approached the city and Washoe County through a very normal process to make updates to some key floodmaps in the area that were outdated. And I just wanted to make the point that what we're going to be discussing through in these two items does not pertain to the Truckee River. The areas that we're going to be discussing, and I'll share a map in a bit, pertain to the southwest Reno foothills and some tributary streams, so it's not, again, not the Truckee River. And these are for both hydrology, so the amount of water that runs off, and the mapping, you know, the new mapping of flooding limits, when we're talking about flood mapping, that's what we're talking about. The maps that FEMA wants to update are, some of them go back to the late 80s and 90s, and we have better technology now, so we really can produce better maps that allow us to make better decisions when it comes to floodplain management. So this is a perfect time for us to work with FEMA. When FEMA approached us initially, they released some initial map results. We reviewed those. We worked with HDR Engineering, a local firm, to identify things that could be improved with these maps, and we did, in fact, discuss these with FEMA. At the time, we discussed these different areas for improvement with FEMA. They told us that they really didn't have the budget to incorporate all this information. So this really leads us to item number nine, which is, what staff has brought before the city council for consideration of entering into a contract with HDR Engineering to create a complete set of detailed comments and documentation that can then be provided to FEMA. And this also dovetails onto item number B10, because of the fact that the, both the city, FEMA's working with both the City of Reno and Washoe County for this, these floodmap updates, so we have very similar interests. So item number B10 is the item for consideration before the city council of an interlocal agreement for a 50-50 cost share of the proposed work by HDR Engineering. And with that, I'm going to jump to this next slide, which is just to discuss basically this, sort of this process that we're going through right now and where we're at. So step one, FEMA approached the city through a discovery process, sharing of information, understanding. Step two, modeling and engineering, which FEMA did. And then step three is really where we're at now, is FEMA came back to the city and gave us some initial maps for review. So like, like I explained, the city did review those, along with input from HDR Engineering. And really, the next step is FEMA will be releasing preliminary remaps, sorry, preliminary maps for official comment. What we'd like to do through this item, number B9, is be prepared with all of the information that can be readily handed off to FEMA to help inform the maps to the extent possible to really end up with the most accurate, most reliable maps possible for our community. That's really our end goal. And Washoe County, I believe, has a very similar goal, and so partnering together makes sense. November 2024 is when these maps will be released to us. I did, I did confirm that with, with the Region Nine engineer very recently, and it's about a 20 to 24-month process till these are, become the final maps that are being through, regulated through code. This next slide I'm, I'm sharing here, I'd just like to give you a little better feeling for where this is out, so where this is at, excuse me. So we are talking about Dry Creek. So this is, to get oriented, you see South Virginia Street, South Virginia Street here, I-580 here, Mount Rose Highway here. The areas we're talking about are Dry Creek, there's some various branches, Thomas Creek, areas in the pink shading are because it's, these floodmap revisions don't always just affect the stream bed or just the exact bank. You've got flows branching out. Same thing for White's Creek. And then again, White's Creek by branching out into an area downstream known as Double Diamond. So those are the areas that are under consideration with these mapping updates. Again, this is not the Truckee River, just to make that clear, because there is an ongoing discussion about the Truckee River. What I did want to clarify, that you will hear about the Truckee River in the future, is that when FEMA releases this map, they intend to also release the Truckee River floodmap update at the same time as a integrated product. But this effort that we're going through in item number B9 and B10 pertain to a very separate effort initiated by FEMA, known as Risk Map, for, for, for just these southwest foothill streams that we're discussing today, even though the final mapping product will roll, roll out a very, a map that covers a large geographic area, but it's a separate technical input, and it's a separate effort to get to the maps. I did want to, without belaboring technical details, just give an example, and I'll mention a few others, of some of the things that staff would like to work with HDR Engineering on through this, what's proposed in item number B9. So if you look at these two figures, they're similar, they're covering the same area, but if you look on the if you look on the left and the figure that's sort of the yellow tones, you'll see there's less resolution, it's a little more coarse, it's not as, it's not as refined or accurate. If you look at the figure on the right, you can see that this is, this is a stream bed. So that, what we're looking at are features, which is a terrain model. And you see that on the right, it's a little more precise, it's a little bit more accurate. The difference here is that this is a, a terrain model that would help to create the flow characteristics of a stream. From that, you come up with a flood, floodplain map. Through a little more computing power, a little more memory, you can come up with a more accurate map. Staff and HDR recommends we should put that additional effort in to come up with an accurate map. A more accurate map, I should say. Some other things that are similar would be the way we create a mesh to, that the model, you know, hydraulic modeling software would use. We can do that with more precision. We can, there are some inputs for the hydrology model that we recommend are more appropriate for the area. Land use could be refined in what was initially presented to us. There are areas where we, when we reviewed the product that FEMA gave to us initially, that we saw some errors. And then we also saw some areas where what they gave us in their documentation didn't line up with what they gave us in the mapping. So there are many more types of comments and, and information we would like to feed back to FEMA, but those are some examples. So with that, before council for consideration this morning are two items, item number B9 and B10. Item number B9 pertains to an agreement with HDR Engineering to enter into a contract to allow us to put together a complete package of information that can be handed over to FEMA. And item number B10 before council for consideration is an interlocal agreement for cost sharing. It's a 50-50 cost split with Washoe County because of the fact that the work is so, there's so much overlap and common interest. So the, the recommended motion this morning for B9 is I move to approve staff recommendation to enter into an agreement with HDR Engineering to provide updated modeling and technical documentation to inform proposed flood maps. And for B10, I move to approve interlocal agreement with Washoe County for cost sharing for work by HDR Engineering.
Thank you, Joe. Quick question before we go to Ms. Ebert, who pulled this item. Do we have any disclosures or recusals on this item?
Madam Vice Mayor, thank you, I do. Disclosure, Madam Mayor, fellow city council members, and Madam Clerk, in the interest of full transparency on items B9 and B10, I am disclosing that HDR Engineering is a current client of my consulting firm, Taylor Made Solutions. On this matter, I have sought guidance from the city attorney's office. I have been advised that I have a substantial and continuing business relationship with HDR Engineering, and therefore a commitment in a private capacity to the interests of HDR Engineering. Here, item B9 and B10 seek approval of a consulting agreement, services agreement with HDR. As such, I have been advised that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by my current contracts with HDR Engineering. Accordingly, I will not be participating or voting on this item today. Madam Clerk, please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting pertaining to these agenda items. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. And is there anyone else that has a disclosure on either of these items? Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Taylor. All right, please proceed, Ms. Ebert, you pulled this item.
I, I know these items are just for the agreements for the contract and the cost sharing, but once this is completed, will these new maps come to council for review? Or will they be provided in any fashion for us to look at them?
We can certainly insert a, a step where they would come back before council. I'm actually drawing a blank, and I don't know, Trina?
Good morning, Trina McGinn, Director of Utility Services. No, they typically don't come back to council for approval, FEMA maps, they develop them. We can certainly bring back the maps as part of the review process so that you can see possibly the changes we're recommending to submit to FEMA when we get closer to that and if this, these items are approved.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing the difference between what we've come up with versus, you know, what FEMA had on their maps, if we could do that.
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
I, yes, Ms. Brackus.
Yeah, you know, I want to preface this by saying that I object to these items being on the consent agenda. It's too bad the mayor isn't here, at the meeting any longer, because, you know, she and the manager put it on. But this is not a simple enter into interlocal, enter into a contract. This is about an issue that's many years in the making, is of tremendous significance, not only to the folks who reside in these areas, their own property, but to the community as a whole. It all does eventually go down to the river. I'm pretty sure it was in the calculations when we had a very contentious hearings over, you know, the McCarran, the old university farm, the southeast connector, and certainly even that little run-of-a-mill appeal we heard last year with the, I can't, an easement with a, a well, y'all remember that one. And so, you know, I know we're in federal process right now, and that has its own path, but we aspire to be transparent to the community, to be thoughtful about issues, and this has completely gone off the radar of everyone. And it just can't be buried in with staff, technical work, and consultant work, in my view. We need a parallel process on these flood maps that have community meetings, that have briefings to all of us. Maybe my colleagues have seen those maps, seen the changes more, because I have an embargo on information coming to me from the manager. That's part of my proceedings against him for retaliation. But minimal, this should have been a department item on the agenda, a workshop item would be better, and a community meeting to understand where we are at. And so I am very troubled. I've been looking and wondering when these FEMA maps are coming forward. We just went through a decade of big growth, filling in the floodplain. We had Daybreak, we had McCarran. The flood maps came up every single time. And now FEMA has done a product, and no one has seen it but the staff, and they want to work and feather, and work up against it. It needs to be central. I am troubled, I'm not gonna support these two. I want to workshop, community workshops on the maps and understand where we're at, what we're trying to achieve. Your, your one on the resolution was, was great, but, you know, it's a workshop item. It's not a consent, sign this contract. So I'm really troubled, I'm bothered the way that we're managing this, but it is just a continuation of this region and how we view flooding, filling in floodplains, data with the development process. I know you all manage the floodplain administration, you're not on the development side of things. And the problem is, too many people have ended up in the floodplain. Too many people who have received development approval are now vulnerable. That needs to be network, that needs to be understood in a different setting than a pulled item by a council member at the consent agenda. I am really troubled.
Okay, thank you. I have a comment, too, but before I speak, does anyone else have a comment?
So Joe, could you put up the map that showed the areas that they're looking at?
Of course.
I was gonna bring this up on my own, but Ms. Ebert had pulled it. So my questions are, when, most of this area is in the county, okay, on the, on the west side of Virginia, there might be a touch of it in city Reno. But the area in Double Diamond is clearly in city Reno. And there's two questions I have. When my predecessor, Sharon Zadra, was on the council, there was a berm in that area that was decertified. And FEMA came in and did a remap at that time, this is about, this is over 10 years ago. And as a result of that remap, 313 homes, I want to say, were put into the floodplain. And as a result of that, they had to then pay additional flood insurance if they had a mortgage on their house. Okay, so that's 313 homes that were already identified as in the flood area because of this removal of a berm. And what, the berm's still there, but what it was is nobody took responsibility for maintaining it. So FEMA basically said, it can't be certified as a berm because it's not being maintained, it's not protecting anyone from flooding. So with this remap, my question is, is do you expect more homes to be put in the floodplain? That's my first question.
I share the concern for that area, and I'm very familiar with it as well. And based on the preliminary, again, I say preliminary because things could change, but based on the preliminary information, both the flow rates and the way it's being mapped as proposed, there would, there would not be an increase in the amount of homes. What there could be is a slight shift, but overall, what we've seen so far is a reduction in that area.
Reduction of the 313 that were originally put in? Some of those will drop out? So that's the current knowledge about what FEMA's gonna be reviewing? In other words, what you've done and what FEMA's gonna be reviewing?
Yeah, what they propose, plus we have issued some comments to them, but as I explained in my, my presentation, they're not incorporating those comments. And we, by way of this item, would like to have a package we can sort of give to them that they can then put into.
Okay. Well, the other issue I wanted to bring up is that, at that time, when FEMA did that remap, people did not know, and it was a hue and cry. I don't know if you were at the city then or another agency, but, and she came to me, actually, over at the flood project and asked me to come up with $5 million to maintain that berm and get all these people out of the flood zone. And so I have, I couldn't do that. It's a flood project, flood project centered on Truckee River, not everything that drains to the Truckee River. So I, I believe that we should at least put these people on notice that there's something happening, and I don't know the best way to do that.
So FEMA has a process, sorry, Trina McGinn, Director of Utility Services. FEMA does have a process, that's step four on the graphic that you can see ahead of you, where they do a public notice. They notice all properties that are coming into or going out of a floodplain. They also provide this information to the, to the communities so that we have a chance to review it. What this item is doing, since FEMA afforded us the opportunity to look at what they, you know, look at their mapping ahead of this process, it afforded us the opportunity to get ahead of it and not start this process at the 90-day appeal portion of, of this process. So this is really getting ahead of it. We will come out, you know, we do have a plan, and through FEMA's process, that would notice all of the public. We do plan on bringing this back to council so that you understand the changes. After this step is where we, we fully understand the changes. We've had HDR kind of look at it conceptually, but this, these items are for them to do the analysis, to provide more accurate mapping that we can then bring to the council for further, you know, discussion.
Okay, so, but I guess I'm confused. Would you bring it, that is the next step four, is notifying the public? But you're saying before you formally notified the public, you notify us?
Yes, that would be the idea.
Okay, then one last thing. We have still a settlement going on for eight years in Double Diamond about their maintenance of these floodways. And so it's, it's weird to me that, on one hand, we're mapping, but on the other hand, we still haven't resolved that. So can we bring these processes together somehow?
Well, they are separate processes, but we can certainly look into that when we find, get more finalized details of what the mapping in this area will look like. I don't believe that it really changes the, the floodplains in those particular areas. And, and you know, FEMA does have their process, which we're, they're allowing us to insert ourselves and bring better information to the mapping.
Well, I agree with my colleagues that they need to know that this is happening, so it's not a surprise, whether it's 90 days or 120 days or whenever. Thank you. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Any further questions? By the way, I think you did a great job, and it's very simple. We easily can have workshops on this. This is why we're here, to discuss that and to bring it to you guys and let us know whenever you want to do that. And we're happy to participate, engage, and ask questions. So I want to apologize for sort of the accusatory comments, but just to know, we're supportive. Okay? So thank you so much. Can I get a motion?
I will make a motion, just because I do think it's important to review these maps. I know that there's been a lot of changes due to development, but I do think it's really important that we, we look at what those changes are gonna be from the FEMA maps to the, you know, what Reno says they should be. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve items B9 and B10.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Yes, go ahead. You know, as I mentioned, I'm not going to support, this should not have been a consent item. There needs to be a process of more knowledge to this body and to the public on where we're at on the process. You have federal process here, but you need transparent city process on what we're going, what we're trying to achieve. Secondly, is, we want to have a stormwater utility. That's been on the due list for five, six years. We're using sewer money to do this storm, this flood work, but it's failing, it's flailing. And a part of it is because of lack of transparency. This would have been a great opportunity to go out into the community with the maps and say, look, this is the sort of thing we need a utility to do. No, we're just gonna put it on a consent agenda, trying to get our maps redone, you know, with FEMA, and then we're gonna go into a very quick process with the feds on their FEMA map provision. No wonder we're not moving forward with a stormwater utility when we do processes like this. I vote no. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right, thank you so much. We are gonna, I'm actually gonna bump up item B17 because they have to get to the airport. So, and that item is the Downtown Management Company LLC Marketing Plan Annual Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Schedule for the Ballroom Facility for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024. And we have Mr. Corono in the house. So you want to come on up? I know, nothing like being embarrassed, right? But no, just in case council has any questions, but I always like some of your, your feedback and, because you're, you're the numbers guy, and I love it. Okay, Vicky, go ahead, take it away.
Vicky, VP, and Director of Finance. I'm here for this item. This is the item regarding the ballroom facility. This is an item that comes before council each year according to the agreement. And so I know Councilmember Ebert pulled this item, or do you want me to go through the presentation, or do you, do you have questions just on the marketing plan itself that?
I do have questions, so I, I don't know if you want to go through the presentation that might answer my questions, and then if.
Up to you. I'm willing to do whatever you want.
Yeah, maybe it might be helpful to me if you go through it. Thanks.
I will run through that. I just have a quick presentation on it. Like I said, this is an item that council approved. The management agreement was approved back in 2011, and the agreement provides that the marketing plan, the operating budget, and the capital improvement plan be approved each year by council. And the way the management company runs this, it's on a calendar year. So what you see before you is for the calendar year, for the current year, 2024. The management company provide these, provided these documents. In 2023, for that calendar year, they had a net profit of $204,000. And then the profits are shared 50-50 between the city and the management company, and this is all in the agreement. And then for '24, in the, the documents they provided, the forecasted net income is $216,000, and they are proposing capital expenditures of $75,000. And most of that, the bulk of that $75,000 is for roof repairs and then also for some HVAC repairs. The, we have a capital fund that the city maintains that has a $500,000 account balance as of the end of the year, which would be December 31, 2023. And that is the maximum that we go up to. We keep contributing to that based on the share of the net profit. So $100,000 of the net profit is to be placed into the capital account until it gets to $500,000, and it's at $500,000 now. So you'll see in the work papers that we were kind of working up to that. If the gross revenues are insufficient to meet the $100,000 annual deposit, then the management company contributes the difference. And again, they have done that over the last few years because we were carrying forward losses for that particular property based on when COVID hit, so there were losses there. So this is the recommended motion, and I'm glad to answer any questions, and obviously they're here as well.
On, there, it's on. All right. Do you want to, is there anything that you would like to add? I always love your insight. Ken, come on up.
Or, or the money guy? The money guy, he's, he's my money guy.
The numbers guy?
They're both pretty amazing, I'm pretty lucky. So I, Madam Mayor, or council people, I appreciate being here, it's an honor to always be in front of you guys, you know, this is a, in '23, I wanted to point out, it's a, it's a pretty remarkable year because we've been operating with net losses that have been carried forward for year after year after year, and we finally have had net profits for three full years. And what's amazing about that is we've had to continue to deposit back into that fund. Well, we broke through those net operating losses, so we actually split a whole $10,000 each, so it was pretty exciting. But this year is, it will have a whole fresh year with no net operating losses, so the $215,000, the goal is to be able to split that $100,000 each equally. First time in many, many years we'll be able to say that. That is pretty remarkable, and we're pretty excited about to continue that. In addition to that, I'm, we're thrilled that we've had some changes in, in senior management at the entertainment level, at the corporate level, proceeds as entertainment. I do think that runs, creates a pretty interesting runway moving forward. They've already booked two new shows that we typically wouldn't actually have gone to one of our competitors, which are now gonna be booked in the ballroom, so we're pretty excited about that. pretty excited about that. My entertainment director will yell at me if I say the names.
Oh, I was going to say, and who, who are they?
I already know that one of them is foreigner. Technically, that has not been announced, the release, like I said, that was one. The other one, like I said, went to a competitor, which will now come to the ballroom, so we're excited to bring it downtown and, and that, you know, listen, this change in management, I think will only create a runway for further expansion into the ballroom, as well as the REC. You know, our dedication to those buildings is very significant.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to hand it over.
I apologize, Madam Mayor. If you would state your name and title for the record.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, it's Ken Austin Powsky. I am the Senior Vice President and General Manager for the three resorts called The Row.
All right. Councilwoman Ebert, go ahead.
Okay, so I have some questions. So it's mentioned that you have to put money in this account until it reaches $500,000, and we've hit that threshold now. What happens to those funds, you know, over $500,000? Where do they go?
So like, so the profit.
It just gets divided?
It gets divided, yeah.
Okay, so we just keep $500,000 in the account, and then anything over that just gets?
We contribute further beyond the 500?
I, no. It only goes up to the 500.
Okay.
To the 500, and then it just gets split between the.
Okay. And, and it said that there was no expenditures for 2023. And I only bring this up because when I drive past the building, I noticed that there's some issues with the sign. It looks like some of the bulbs are not, I don't know if it's not working right, or something's out. And I, I went through here, and I, I noticed on page six of the contract, it says, you know, that there's F, F, and E, I think is what category the signs would fall under, that, that those things should be maintained, so.
And I'll be honest with you, I was not aware that there was malfunctions with the signage. That being said, this is not something that I, that I believe that should stay continued, so very, very supportive of getting it replaced and repaired immediately. Frankly, to be honest with you, I have been talking to my team about putting a larger sign in, because frankly, I think it's too small.
Yeah, it does seem a little small scale-wise, but.
Yeah. This is the first time there was a sign, though, I would say, like, we put the sign in about a year ago, because there never was one. And so now, and then now that it's up, I'm like, that's too small. We need a bigger one, so.
And maybe I can give you a little bit of background on the sign. We brought it to the R C V A, and unfortunately, at the time, it was a little contentious, and the amount, the full amount and the approval was not approved over at the R C V A. And it's something that a couple of new board members have asked about, the same concerns that you have, and are going to bring it back to this board because we really feel that it is sort of the responsibility of the R C V A to pay for that sign.
Okay. So it's a known issue?
It's been an issue.
Okay.
So I'm glad you brought it up, and, you know, I think that we would like to see some support for downtown Reno on that sign, and unfortunately, it didn't work out that way at the R C V A. So all I can just say to this body is if you see some of our colleagues, ask them to please be supportive because they did not allocate enough for the sign, and it became sort of a bone of contention. So maybe that helps you a little bit. We'll be bringing it back, and I hope this time.
To here or to R C V A?
R C V A.
Well, I mean, is that separate from this contract? Because it, I mean.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, because it, it seems like this contract is the maintenance for that facility, so.
Yeah, so remember, that's where they lie. The R C V A does.
Okay. So this contract doesn't delegate the maintenance of that facility?
It does, but the signage is not under there, so.
Okay.
So we're addressing it.
So that's what I was saying. Okay, so the contract, I mean, it says, you know, like I said, under the F, F, and E, that, that is, it's called out signage, so even though it says in the contract that this is supposed to be maintained by that, it's not? So the contract's not accurate?
Well, it's just, it didn't get the support from the board, and it has to be approved. Everything, all those little details have to be approved from the board, and didn't get the full amount of support.
May I clarify something?
So we'll bring, bring it back. Go ahead.
Are we discussing the REC sign or the ballroom sign?
That, it's the ballroom sign on the front of the building?
The small one, that's the digital sign?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'll have to follow up on that one. Sorry, I thought you were talking about the REC. My mistake.
Oh, that's, oh, sorry. I'm talking about the other one.
Yeah, I probably, I think that's maybe where the confusion may be lying.
I thought we were talking about the other one.
Yeah, I'm talking about.
Because it's been a bone of contention.
Okay.
Because when I drive by, it's.
So that sign, we will take care of.
Okay, okay.
I promise you. We'll make sure it's managed. I recurred to me as you were talking, that you're discussing the Reno Event Center, and it's just like, this doesn't cover that contract.
It's been very, yes.
No worries at all.
Little bone of contention. Sorry, wrong sign.
No, all good. No worries.
Okay, yeah.
All right, go ahead, Councilwoman Ebert.
I think that was the main thing. You know, I don't, I don't know much about the interior of, of the building, but like I said, just every time I drive past it, I notice that there's, you know, some lines that are kind of messed up, so just would like to see that get fixed.
Well, look at the other sign.
200%. 200% agree. We, we will, I, I, we take pride in that. You know, it's not an easy process in that it, it does take time to get parts. Things are not easy to get, but we will make, I will make it a priority.
Great, thank you. Thanks. That was my question.
All right, any other questions? Councilwoman Brackus?
Since you asked, Madam Mayor, this will be the last time I'm on when you give her a presentation, and I think the bigger issue and discussion is to really understand what this facility is. And we're paying, we're paying massive debt on this facility. Sometimes it's tapped our general fund. I think the general fund has hit over $20 million since I've been on the council to pay the debt for the bowling, the ballroom, and the event center. And, you know, I have questions too, you know, are we putting 1% of the building's value each year in to make it, you know, not deteriorate? But, you know, there was an article I'll call attention to, people in the New York Times today, a business section about, you know, Super Bowl weekend in Reno. And it said, comment like, Reno's always in the crossroads, not going here, not going there. It wasn't particularly flattering, although the tourism experience of people who came over for it was good. And I think it's missed opportunities like the ballroom, which we all inherited, that is not living up to its potential, that is preventing Reno from moving forward. Years ago, we looked into an, we RFP'd out the bowling stadium and other ones with a group to look forward, but I think that it's time, because I think the agreement expires in '28. It's time for the council to think about the next vision of that property, that, that facility to return to Reno, not necessarily be Caesar's and Entertainment's, you know, space. I don't know if it's been, it's been a drag on you or not, but it needs to be envisioned because downtown is not performing how it needs to be. And I think, I've always felt, and I'll just leave it here, is it's the opportunity, the university needs to cross the highway, they need to be the investor in downtown to take it to its next chapter. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting me talk about that.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you 200%. Like, first and foremost, recognize, obviously, we're committed, we, we want downtown to, to do great, and obviously, and so the, as far as running that, recognize that we, anything that comes into that building, it does not have to be Caesar's business, it could be any business, so we welcome, I mean, everything, we're strictly managing it, you know, so then there are a lot of opportunities and situations. Schools, I know, also use that facility. That's not something we're bringing, and that's because it's coming to the city. Just one quick comment on that New York Times article. That was a paid advertisement, so for those who purchased that paid advertisement, they had the input on that, so.
Yeah, I did see that.
Yeah, so it was not, it was not an independent article. It was paid, it was a paid advertisement.
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead, Councilwoman Taylor, take it away.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. As the council member for downtown, I just want to maybe get rid of some of the misinformation that we just heard. And I think I heard that you guys had a fantastic weekend with the Super Bowl downtown, and we are doing so much for downtown in the last year and a half. I'm super supportive of this council and the team that we have put together and everything that is coming downtown. So that paid advertisement, advertisement was absolutely incorrect and wrong.
I concur. We, we did have, I mean, last year in 2022, it was a record year, and actually, excuse me, '23, what year is it again? Anyway, it's the, in '23. And so the fact that we maintained that, we actually sold out every one of our venues, the, the Northern Nevada, as well as Northern California, Seattle, Portland, Oregon, people from all around the country, people who, from Oklahoma who I met, people from Florida that come in, like, hey, we come down to downtown Reno for 20 years, and we continue to do that because we continue to love coming here. So there is a lot of really good positive things coming into downtown Reno. People still love coming here. I sat and talked to people, thousands of people from all over the place, and they truly love it.
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just a quick question, too. Thank you for being here.
Oh, my pleasure.
Always appreciate the annual update. I was wondering, one of the things we're approving today is the marketing plan, and I didn't really hear about that in the presentation, and is there a way you could summarize that for us?
Absolutely. So to, to keep it simple, we effectively look at as an extension of our facility. Yes, to your point, we do want to make sure all of Reno and anybody in the, in the surrounding areas can use that. But because it's an extension of our facility, when we sell that space, we, we push the new things that we did. We have just, we, we had a soft opening to our brand-new cafe, which we're pretty excited that we are, people can go to our cafe, that's called Cafe Central Cafe and Cocktails. Come check it out, the bar will be open in March. But the point being is, is that, that, that push is in all of our marketing materials. In addition to that, it's been a long road, but we are very, very close to opening the Ramses Restaurants. That is a push within our marketing materials. It shows the people that we, that coming to our facility, come experience this incredible ballroom, stay downtown, and enjoy all the amenities associated with it.
That, very good. And then where's the restaurant going to be, Ramses?
So Ramses Kitchen is going to sit, there's two of them, Ramses Kitchen, as well as Ramses Fish and Chips. It will sit right in the center of Silver Legacy on the mezzanine.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, any other questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Ebert.
So I, I, going through the contract further, it said that operating budget, at least 30 days prior to the first day of each fiscal year, operators shall prepare and file with the city clerk and provide to the city manager and city council for review and approval of the operating budget and line item form attached here to Exhibit B. I didn't see that in this exhibit, any kind of line item budget in the staff report, so if that's something that we could get. And also, it says that, you know, that the city may request in writing operator perform or contract for certain maintenance operations or equipment replacement of the ballroom. So I just want to know, do we need to request in writing that that sign get fixed? I just want to make sure that we follow any processes that are required of us to get that sign fixed as well.
You know, Vicky's sharing, it's an Exhibit A that was specifically put in there that outlines what you've just measured. To the point about the, the sign, you, I guarantee you that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's fixed in my brain that it will be fixed. It's, you know, I, I promise you, and soon as I get back, I'm going to start the wheels in motion to make sure that it gets taken care of.
I'm so sorry, I missed Exhibit A. I apologize.
And Brian does want to say something.
Yeah. Brian Crown, Executive Director of Finance for The Row. For all capital that goes through the ballroom, we do get quotes, and then we send it to Vicky, so she can approve it, run it by, make sure everything looks okay, and then we submit it for capital. So we are open to any suggestions, and then we'll get, get the quotes and run it by Vicky before we do any work, and allow it to, make sure it falls in line with what you guys agree with, so.
Great.
Yeah, I can't stress enough, this is a partnership. We want all input. This is not, we don't believe in working in silo.
Yeah. And then also, a lot of that information comes through the $2 surcharge when we're talking about everything that's happening downtown. So happy to give you any notes on that stuff as well. All right, any further questions? No? Okay, and then I would just say this, there was a couple statements of some pretty large dollar figures. Would you get me a memo, because I assume you don't have it?
Yes, absolutely.
How much money has, have we paid into that?
Yes, we haven't, in a number of years, we did during the pandemic, but in a number of years, we have not paid in, so I would have to look into that, but I don't believe it's that large.
Right, I don't think so either, but I want to correct that because oftentimes there are things that are said here that aren't accurate. So thank you so much. Okay, with that being said, Councilwoman Ebert. Councilwoman?
All right, motion to approve.
All right.
Item B17.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, nice seeing you.
Thank you all.
Have a good trip. Bye, guys. Thanks so much. Okay, getting back on track, I'm going to send it to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to item B16, Boy 16. And this should be Megan Burner.
Yep. Yeah, I pulled this item because most of us don't serve on the Arts and Culture Commission, we're not the liaison, Mr. Reese's. And I, this is a pretty significant public art piece, one of the more significant I've seen in the last few years. And so I just wondered if you could tell us about it? I didn't know if you had a picture of it, or what's planned, or are they still designing it?
Okay, yeah. Good morning, Madam Mayor, City Council. Megan Burner, Arts and Culture Manager, for the record. Yes, this is for the approval of artist John Fleming for the Audi Boulevard Public Art Project. This is, I have a short presentation, which will show some of it. So you can see a sketch of the proposal here. There are actually two locations.
And was that a bus stop?
No, they're not bus stops. They are, like, they provide shade and a little bit of seating. There are some semi-decent-sized plaza spaces that have been created on those corners where the pedestrian bridge used to be.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. So this is at the intersection of Audi and Silverada Boulevards. And just a quick overview of the process, where, where that highlight is, the approval of the final artwork. This involved a long process of doing community engagement. We actually did a community engagement survey before we put out the call for artists to get some input on what the community would like to see there. That went into the RFQ. The finalists that were selected sort of addressed some of that in their initial qualifications that they submitted. We then had the artists do community engagement sessions, where the public was invited to ask questions, interact. We put out concept proposals for their artwork. Once they developed those, they actually presented those at a public meeting where the public was invited to comment. And then there was online and a few in-person, actually, opportunities for the public to give further input on those proposals. And then from all of that input, we selected an artist. And the artist that the Arts Commission, the Public Art Committee, and the Arts Commission are recommending is John Fleming, because his really did address the community feedback more than others and integrate, you know, into that space. It's really a placemaking project. So here's the, another view of that sculpture, sculptural installation proposed for the corner. This is for the northwest corner at Audi and Silverada. And you can see it spells out, you know, the name of the street. There are some benches there, and then there's this O shape that has actually a, sort of a changeable canvas.
Oh.
And so the idea is that this could be a mural surface for local artists to use, and the Arts Commission and Public Art Committee would create a process to program that and invite artists to, to use that surface. And he kind of was inspired by the drive-in movie theater close by, using that screen. And so the other piece looks like this, and then identifies the area as Silverada.
So in this piece, they would sit on the letters?
Mm-hmm.
And on the other piece, the seating's off to the side?
Exactly.
And then on this piece with the O, is that, when it's actually prepared, will the O have that mural, or a mural, or will it just be blank when it's finished?
So that, it will have, it should have a mural. So there's, this is going to take several months to fabricate before it gets installed, and I think that we will initiate that process to get something put on it before it gets installed.
From a separate artist?
Mm-hmm. Yes. So the artist that commissioned this was not proposing to put his own artwork within that, that space. He's sort of creating this installation that can serve as-
As a canvas for others. It's very cool. I mean, I have to say, it looks like it's quite scale, you know, to, quite a scale, large scale. And it's informative, and it provides seating, and multi-use, and it's artistic, and it provides a space for other artists. I mean, I think it's very cool. One thing you want to make sure is wherever these are situated on those corners, that they don't block the traffic. I'm going through an experience near my home where somebody put up a fence and suddenly changed all the views entering the freeway, not freeway, but the streets, and all of my neighbors are struggling. But this looks, you know, it's see-through, but just, you know, making sure it's in a location that won't block. Those roads get heavy traffic.
Yes.
And anyway, but I think what, one thing I think is particularly cool about it is that we haven't had something like this in that area at all. And here we have a brand-new infusion of dollars into a former strip mall, which is now being transformed into the generator and a variety of other businesses. And, and what a cool thing to go along with it. So thank you for showing up here today and explaining. Looks like the mayor stepped out, so does anyone else have any comments, questions? Okay. All right, well, hearing none, I guess I, I pulled this item. If there's no other comments, I would like to make a motion to approve Item B-16.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thanks so much for being here. What a cool project. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. I'm going to send it back to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to Item B-18, pulled by Councilmember Martinez, and this is April Wolf.
Mayor, Council for the Record, April Wolf. Just pulling up our PowerPoint real quickly. I just wanted to provide some background on our annual military sports camp. This is kind of a longstanding program that we've been fortunate to receive grant funds for, for the last several years. Hopefully, we'll see. Okay. So just aligning with fiscal sustainability, and obviously arts and parks and recreation. So just some history, actually, military sports camp was kind of born out of making a presentation to council. We had just started into working with veterans, and at the time, Mayor Kishel said, hey, you need to talk to Mr. DiLoreto about your programs. With his Nevada Military Support Alliance, we had an opportunity to meet with him and let him know what we were doing for veterans through City of Reno Parks and Recreation. And from day one, he supported our annual military sports camp and continues to do so to this day. So the program has been in existence since 2011. It is open to disabled veterans, their spouse or caregiver at no charge. So we typically serve a total of 30 veterans with their spouse or caregiver, and we give registration preference to Nevadans since we receive funding both from the Nevada Military Support Alliance, from the state of Nevada, which this grant is being awarded. So we'd really want to make sure that we support Nevadans and hopefully give them an idea of what adaptive sport is about. This is a week-long where I jam-pack every single day, but it's an opportunity to expose to things that we offer on a regular basis throughout the calendar year. So if they try wheelchair rugby, or they come out and try wheelchair basketball, or adaptive cycling, they have an opportunity to plug into existing programs that City of Reno offers. Like I mentioned, this program is entirely grant-funded. It probably costs approximately $30,000 to $35,000 to put on. Everything is covered from transportation, lodging, food, all the adaptive activities, and is completely free to the veterans to participate. So I have a quick video from this year's camp. We have a one, so we were able to have Chief Coughran and Chief Vine come out and volunteer for our fly fishing day up at Everline Resort, so I just have a short video. So hopefully. It's on their golf course.
Oh.
It's completely private and extremely well-stocked, with quite large fish. And so we actually had a number of individuals, both veterans, some of our staff here with City of Reno that came out and volunteered. All of the fly fishing gear is completely donated by Adams Built, so we have a number of partners that come together to make that experience unbelievable, and everyone is guaranteed they're going to catch a fish, so. So with that, just a recommendation to approve a grant from the Nevada Department of Veteran Services, who's going to help support primarily the bulk of the funding needed for this year's September 2024 military sports camp.
Yeah, that's really a hard one to, I don't know. That is fantastic. April, thank you for everything. You're always so humble and quiet, like, I think you need to come to council more. I, she's all, no, please, no. But you do so many cool things in this city, I can't even begin to tell you. We actually, I think, get a lot of praise for being very innovative throughout the country, and it's, a lot of it is all because of the work that you do and how much you care. Like, this is like your heart and soul. You don't come to work going, I want a paycheck. You come to work saying, I want to make a difference. Like, you're amazing.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much. So I really do think you should come to council more. I do. I think you should bring other, you know, you do a lot. You do a lot of programs. So, a lot of programs and projects. I just want you to know, I'm a huge fan.
Thank you.
So, good, great job. All right, was that you?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you, April, for all the work you've done to pull together all the resources to provide this week-long opportunity for our veterans to enjoy the outdoors, and happy to make a motion, unless other folks have any questions, but I appreciate the opportunity for you to come up here and provide that video. It's gorgeous. It's nice to see that they were catching fish, and how happy everybody was to be there, so.
And you're all welcome to show up to any of it this September as well, so.
Yeah, will you let us know?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I know when I attended, I think it was the kickoff-
Yes.
-right before you all went out there, and how happy everybody was to participate and just enjoying, whether it was the golf simulators or bowling in that facility. So it was great. Thank you so much for the invitation.
You know, the other thing is, tell the council a little bit about Kim Vine.
She's amazing.
Isn't she? She is amazing, like, impressive.
Actually-
Matt, Frank, bring her next time.
I will, absolutely. I didn't know who she was.
Oh.
It was when Doug did the interview on one of the city chats, and I was like, I need to know who that person is.
Yeah.
So just sharing her work with veterans and first responders, offering fly fishing as a therapeutic tool. I immediately sent an email to her and said, hey, we need to work together. So she has really spearheaded, for sure, the fly fishing portion of military sports camp the last two years, gathering unbelievable donations of gear that-
Yeah.
-each of the veterans receive every year, so-
She's amazing.
Very appreciative of her.
I met her at the courthouse. She is, what, what, is she like a-
Chief Marshal.
Yeah, Chief Marshal. She's a Chief Marshal. She's amazing.
She is.
Yeah, so I think everyone would be very impressed if she came to council, because she's a super cool woman. She, like, she's like, I want to teach everyone to fly fish, so, and she's amazing. So, anyway, great job. Okay. Did you give me a motion?
No, not yet, but I'm happy to.
Okay, go right ahead.
So again, thank you, and happy to make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great job, and great to see you. You got to bring the doggies and the kids and, okay. Moving right along, sending it back to you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to Item B-19, pulled by Councilmember Ebert, and it looks like we have Commander Larson here.
All right. Hello, Commander.
How are you?
Take it away.
I think in 26 years, this is the first time I've made it up here, so.
Wow.
It's just kind of interesting, right?
You finally hit the lotto.
Absolutely. So again, here, Commander Rob Larson, as you, as you well know, on B-19, this is a grant that the Reno Police Department is looking to accept from the Office of Traffic Safety. It's for four oral fluid testing devices and 25 cartridges to run those devices. An oral testing fluid device does drugs, so it's different than PBTs, which measure alcohol, so this measures drug impairment. I think the staff report goes over it fairly well, so take any questions if you have them.
Awesome. Well, good job. Okay, go ahead. Councilwoman Ebert.
Yeah, I did have a question, and I did also talk to Chief Nance about this, and she answered some of my questions, but just in the staff report, I noticed it said, the roadside oral fluid test is a screening test and not an evidentiary test. So is that true? This would not be used-
Correct.
-in a case against someone?
Correct. Our current DUI officers, they're very well-versed in drug recognition experts. They would use this very rarely. This is for our mate investigators, some people that are looking to become DUI officers in the future. And what they'll do is, it needs consent for this test, so they'd have to consent, number one. And then they will use this just as that little bit that maybe helps them out, right? They can see impairment, they've got to get impairment before they can make the arrest, whether they're thinking their impairment is drug or alcohol. This test will be that thing that says, oh, maybe it's, there's some drug on board. When I was up in traffic, and still today, most time DUIs are a combination. It's not just alcohol, most of the time there is drugs on board as well.
Okay.
A little bit different when you do that testing to recognize the differences. Very slight.
All right, any further questions? Go ahead, Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, hi. I had questions too in my briefing, and I don't see that they were answered in a memo follow-up, and I don't have the opportunity to have direct one-on-one meetings with the chief like I did for many years. So you're the one who gets my questions. My first question was, is this a pilot project?
No, ma'am. We currently have three currently in use. Like I said, they're, right now, they're at the DUI officer level, but we're looking to expand the program internally. Michigan State also did a study on them for several years to validate the validity of them, although each drug is a little bit different. They found about a 95% success rate.
Well, I did do some independent research and saw about, Michigan had a pilot project.
I apologize, yes, Michigan.
Michigan. No, no, it was Minnesota, you're right, Minnesota.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know, and I'll say, I, you know, in 2014, when I came on a couple of years, started realizing how terrible things were going on the road, and now in a decade, things have even gotten worse than anyone's imagined, not only in Reno, you know, in the United States. And it's recognized internationally that Reno's kind of set, or not Reno, the US is apart from other developed countries in terms of what's going on in our roads. So I'm very supportive, and I've worked with the Office of Traffic Safety since 2000, so, you know, understand their work. And they funded, they, the parallel Minnesota one funded their effort. But I am a little concerned about the parameters of this, and maybe would have liked it to not be a consented item, to understand a little bit more about how we're doing this. I don't even think the staff report mentioned that we've been using these, so I'd like to know how it's been going. And, and so a couple other questions that I have not had been able to answer is, it says you're getting 25 test cartridges. Does that mean then that you can do 25 stops? Is that the number that that cap's at?
Yes, you can use that device 25 times. Each cartridge is a single use.
Okay, so we get 25. And because it's new, at least I thought-
Right.
-I wanted to know what the parameters are for using these to people, you know? Is it like you have, from the Office of Traffic Safety, you do, you know, roll out, you know, I'll say stains, you know, or, and you, you say, we're going to do crosswalk work, because, you know, I just want to make sure, if we have 25, the 25 people are chosen, you know, fairly. They're not people with Grateful Dead stickers, they're not people going to 420, they're not people, you know, who have enemies at City Hall. How, how is the 25 going to be rolled out? Do you have a bulletin on, on how these officers are going to use these 25?
No, we don't. We still are going to have to get reasonable suspicion for the stop, so we can't just go out and pull anybody over that we'd like because of any stickers or anything such as that. So we still have to get the reasonable suspicion. Like I said, the DRE officers, our DUI officers are very good at, they will most likely not use it. Where we're looking probably to use these for is put them with, like I said, those younger officers, they just need that little extra bit to kind of say, is this a drug or this not? But mind you, I'm sorry, mind you, they already have to have the reasonable suspicion for the stop, and they already have to have reasonable suspicion for their arrest. If this pops and says, yes, they're under drugs, however, they don't have enough to make the arrest, they cannot make the arrest. The other thing that we're going to use it, the mate vehicles for is currently, anytime there's a major accident, our mate investigators ask for a consensual blood draw. It has to go up, we have to wait for it to come back, it could take several weeks. This will give us that ability on scene to know whether or not drugs are involved in the accident.
Well, you know, I saw, because I, in the grant, there was a link to an Office of Traffic Safety video.
Yes, I watched that one, yes.
Okay, good. So we're on the same page. And these younger officers who are going to be using these, they have to make the arrest first and then check the results of the test.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's the ideal way to do it. You're correct.
Yeah, so that, that has to happen. I just, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm not comfortable. I would have liked to have seen, you know, this has only come up, do we take the grant or not? It's not coming up as, this is, this is how we do things, this is an avenue we feel the world needs to go into, these are the parameters for these 25. I want a fleshing out of these 25 to-
Councilwoman, you're on your 1 minute.
Oh, I, okay, well, I think I get another second round, and I, I appreciate that, yeah.
You will, but I'm going to cut you off right there.
Just a quick on that, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The OTS grant is very specific. Each time we use these 25 that they are giving us, we have to report back, we have to document each and every time we use them, and how those results came out.
Right, great. Councilmember Reese? Go ahead.
Thank you so much for the presentation. At the end of the day, and nationally, these drug testing devices have been shown to save lives. And ultimately, that's the goal that you have at the Reno Police Department. Thank you for the work that you do. These other sort of questions, I, I'm not sure they relate to this topic. I appreciate that you have taken the initiative to seek out the grant opportunities when they avail themselves to our department. I have read a considerable amount about, I suppose it's called roadside oral fluid testing, right? And there are obviously things that it doesn't detect, there are things that it does detect. And as drug laws in this country change, as we have moved towards decriminalizing a number of different types of controlled substances, it has changed, I suppose, the nature of the policing model that you and your officers operate under. So thank you for using the technology to get better, to protect our community. Far too many people have lost their lives to impaired driving and loved ones, and so it's a very sad thing, but I appreciate all the work that you're doing and that your department continues to do to lead. I, I do see all across the country, agencies of every type, small and large, using these to the benefit of their communities, so thank you for that.
Thank you, and I'll be certain to pass it on to my team.
All right, any other questions? Madam Mayor? Hold on. Go ahead, Councilwoman Taylor. Nothing? Okay. Councilwoman Ebert?
No, I don't have anything else.
All right, Councilwoman Breckus, you get two minutes.
Two minutes, thank you. You know, and I also see from the Indiana Criminal Justice Center-
I missed that one, so thank you.
I'll give it to you. You know, and, and I frankly, in the research I did, and I called a criminal defense attorney I know over in the Bay Area, and, and I don't think they're being used in California, so they're kind of new.
Newish.
Newish, and that's fine, but for me, something that involves stopping people, although presumably they've stopped on something else by these junior officers, is something that we're doing a lot of data, we're understanding, we're advertising to people, letting them know, I'm a, I'm not, I'm not there. I'm not there certainly on this coming to us as a consent item, take this grant. I want the parameters." It would have been perfectly fine if this was a department item and Rena, the chief was here, whoever, you know, if you're a lieutenant, right? And said, "You know, look, we've been using this for the last three years, and we reported up the data, and here's how it's going, you know, and we want, here's an opportunity to do more." If you fleshed out a program, that'd be great, I'd probably be there. But on a consent where we have to kind of draw these, you know, questions out, I'm not really willing to put our officers out there and our public into this interaction when it, it just doesn't seem that we are informed of the parameters. And here's something I will say is, I do take the road safety, the impairment so seriously, and I've seen so many devastating occurrences to, you know, lives lost. I can point you along, along different streets in Ward 1 since I've been on. And cities are looking very strongly at new tactics. Right on red is coming up, okay? There's, the California Legislature is putting a governing, a speed governing in. That's a, that's 15, 20 years away is speed governing. We're going there. But if you don't do it right, there's a big blowback, and that's what I'm afraid of. The first time the criminal defense or, you know, the junior officer reads the test result before the arrest...
Correct.
It goes out the window. So I, I think something this substantial tiptoeing into needs a little more dialogue from us and understanding, and that's why I won't be supporting the grant.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it. All right, Commander Larson, listen, I want to say thank you. I think you've done a phenomenal job. I know the work that you do, I know you're an expert in this field, that's why you came before us to present this item. So appreciate you, and I feel very comfortable with all the work that you do, and I know your level of expertise, I just want to say that, just because I think there were some comments made that I wanted to let you know how much we appreciate what you do and how serious you take your position at the Reno Police Department.
Absolutely, and it's not just me, it's, it's the department as a whole, and especially the Traffic Division.
Yeah, well, I just want you to know that I don't need the chief here to present those things. I have you, I have experts in doing the, the good work that you do. So thank you very much. Any further questions from council members, seeing that there are none? Please give me a motion.
Oh, motion to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, you did a great job. Commander, come back anytime.
Absolutely.
All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Moving on to item B-27, pulled by Councilmember Ebert.
Just a commander.
Madam Clerk, I also have a disclosure to read, so if it's before the presentation, do you want me to do that now?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's also why I pulled it, yeah.
You start. Sorry, we have the same thing, that's why we pulled it, I guess.
Yeah, just brief disclosure for clarification on the record. I am a member of the Sons and Daughters of Aaron. I consulted with the City Attorney's Office, and I'm not affiliated with the organization, nor do I have a commitment in a private capacity to the organization. I have been advised that I do not have a conflict to can vote on this item.
Madam Clerk, I have consulted with the City Attorney's Office. I am disclosing that I am a member of the Sons and Daughters of Aaron. I am not on the Board of Directors, nor am I an officer or a person that has any commitment or official role or responsibility with the organization. This item does not financially benefit me personally or benefit me more or less than any other member of the general public. As a result, I have been advised that I can vote on this item.
disclosures on the record. Madam Clerk.
I'm happy to second Ms. Ebert's motion.
Oh, yeah, motion to approve, sorry.
Second.
Good afternoon. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I never thought about it. The one person that should actually be fighting for, I mean, for driving issues, votes no. Okay. Anyway, I just, I'm sorry, but I, I just, no, I'm sorry, I just can't, I, sometimes I just can't, I have to say it in my out-loud voice when I think about it. Okay. Anyway, moving on, Madam Clerk.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. We're moving on to item F-1, F as in Frank, 1, which is an ordinance adoption.
Madam Mayor, I will go ahead and...
Go, go right ahead. Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hall. Take it away.
Ordinance adoption, ordinance number 6669, case number LDC 23-00003, Heiser Master Plan Amendment and Rezoning, ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Zoning. Rezoning a plus or minus 85.2 acre site located south of Interstate 80, I-80 plus or minus 1,320 feet east of Exit 9, Rob Drive, from Large Law Residential, 1 acre, LLR-1, to specific plan district SPD, together with matters which pertain to or are necessarily connected therewith, Ward 4.
Move to adopt.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Carl.
Let's move on to F-2.
Yeah.
Another ordinance adoption. This is ordinance number 6670, case number LDC 24-00030, Lake Mansion Historic Resource Designation, ordinance to amend Title 18, Chapter 18.02 of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Zoning. Rezoning a plus or minus 0.4 acre site from mixed use downtown River Rock District, MD-RD, to plus or minus 0.4 acres of MDRD with historic landmark, HL Overlay Zoning District. The subject property is located at 250 Court Street and has a master plan land use designation of downtown mixed use, DT-MU, Ward 1.
All right, give me a motion.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Madam Mayor, we're moving on to our G items, which are our appointment items. Item G-1 is appointment to the Financial Advisory Board.
All right. I'm going to skip that. Wait, wait, hold on a second.
Who's the liaison?
Oh, I am. So it's...
But what was the recommended?
The recommended motion, or the recommendation from the Financial Advisory Board was to appoint Brian Carano and Charlie Hart.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item G-2 is the appointment to the Neighborhood Advisory Board, Ward 2.
Yeah. Councilwoman Doerr?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'd like to appoint today Michael Ginsburg and Roman Schomburg.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And then I'd like to bring this back, Madam Clerk. I'm still interviewing some other individuals, I have two more appointments.
Would you like the first meeting in March?
Um, please.
Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Mayor, moving on to item H-1, City Council Comments.
All right, any comments?
Yeah.
Go right, go right.
Yeah, I'm very pleased to announce that tomorrow, we're having a special reopening of the Robin Hood Park. Once upon a time, Robin Hood Park was in Ward 2, and I sponsored a community development block grant to help refresh the park. And that was redistributed elsewhere, and eventually the funding came back, and they were able to, very recently, finally do the work that I had asked them to do seven years ago. And so what they've done is they've updated the basketball court, they've replaced the kiddie playground. And the park is, is named in honor, is dedicated in honor of a Reno police officer, Craig Pittman. And he was famous in our town for working with children, and this was, this park was a special effort of his to build it in an area where there was a shortage of playgrounds. Now it's south of Virginia Lake and it's north of Moana, so it's right behind, you'll see the apartments along Moana, it's right back in there, it's on a one-way street, Robin Hood. So as part of the rededication, the Parks Department has refurbished, well, created a brand-new sign recognizing Officer Pittman and his family. And in fact, his daughter's scheduled to come in to celebrate with us today, tomorrow. She's in, in LA, she's going to be flying in, to my knowledge. Finally, Officer Pittman was very critical in implementing the SAVE program. It was his idea, he sponsored it at Reno PD, and a number of SAVE officers are planning to attend, I think at least six, maybe eight, as well as our, some of our Reno police officers. It's an early-out day for schools on, tomorrow. It's a teacher training day. So we'll be starting this, it'll be going from 1 to 3. There'll be snacks that I'm happy to have sponsored, as well as an unveiling of the plaque, and I just wanted to invite you all to attend if you have time.
All right, thank you so much. Councilwoman Taylor, did you want to include anything in council comments? Nothing? No, okay. I thought whenever, when I saw you this morning, you said, "Oh, I want to..." You meant consent?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, all right. Just wanted to make sure I didn't skip over you. Okay, anything else? Madam Clerk, back at you.
I have an announcement. I just wanted to announce that we're having a cooking class for seniors February 29th at the Reno Alks Club. It's going to be from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. It's going to be on leap year day, kind of a fun thing, so free to seniors. We have limited spaces, though. You can sign up on the Reno's website, reno.gov/community/seniors. So hoping that's a successful event. And Chef Chapin, so it's going to be really, really cool. So, yeah, looking forward to it.
We could all go, right? Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I have one other announcement that I think Miguel will share with me. We both serve on the Truckee Meadows Regional Flood Board.
Yes, we do.
And one of the projects that's come forward has really been promoted by our staff, and it's driven for an important reason. So it turns out that the Truckee-Carson Conservancy District has noted a concern that along the area, along Riverside, so the Lear Theater on down, going west to Booth Street, that flood wall was supposed to be updated years ago. Needs to go up a couple feet, one or two feet, not much, but just a little to provide flood protection. But they are working with us on three bridge projects, Arlington, Sierra, and Keystone. And they're move forward with Arlington with the Corps of Engineers, but they said they will not move forward with Keystone Bridge update until we update this flood wall. And so at our last meeting with Flood, which was a couple days ago, we had our staff and others present to the Flood a proposed project that's roughly about $5 million. I say roughly because there's a number of other aspects to the project. To support that is what once formerly was known as a traction project or early start project, a standalone project. And in doing the placemaking, our staff have been working with consultants, and they've come up with an unbelievably beautiful design that would widen the sidewalk that's along the river, make places to sit on benches along the river, also provide bike path, a separated bike path along Riverside. And so this project was daylighted just within the week at Flood. We're going to come back and have a more detailed discussion.